Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Midwest City Council meeting for September twenty seventh, twenty sixteen. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Mr. Bauer, can you come forward and lead us in the invocation? Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to come here this evening, take care of the business of the city. We just thank you for these councilmen that give their time to serve this community, pray a special blessing of wisdom and discernment on them. Lord, we just thank you for the country that we're blessed with, and we're just so thankful for this community. We're just, we just praise you for just giving us a community that, such as we have here in Midwest City. Lord, I just pray that everything that happens this evening will bring honor and glory to you. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to introduce you to two Air Force ROTC cadets that are with us tonight. They're going to lead us in the pledge. We've got Cadet Major Elijah Drake and Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Abigail Bishop. Elijah, both are seniors at Carl Albert High School. Elijah plans to go into the United States Air Force after he graduates and goes to security forces, which is cool. He's going to be a cop. And Abigail plans to go to OSU, so go Pokes. Would you all come forward to the podium and lead us in the pledge, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, please continue standing beside the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys for being here and thank you for leading us in the pledge. Yes, ma'am. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, go into community announcements. Anybody have anything for the good of the order?
Couple of things I'd like to mention. We are, we have started the process for the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority grant, grant applications. Those are available through the city manager's office. I think deadline is in, in November, so if you're interested in making an application, please call our offices. Also, on October fourth, next month, we will be celebrating National Night Out again with a, a significant number of neighborhood associations participating in that National Night Out. If you have any interest in that particular activity, you might call our Neighborhood Services Department. And they can give you the dates and locations for those different events celebrating National Night Out. And then also on October sixth, there'll be a picnic in the, in Regional Park, and the theme of the picnic is picnic with the protectors. And we'll be celebrating those that are there to provide services and protect us, whether it be through the military or through our public services within the community, so. So, you might plan on attending that. That'll be from five to seven on October sixth.
And I do want to encourage each member of the council to attend the Neighborhood Watch meetings in your area on National Night Out. Mr. Stroh has provided everybody with the list of the ones in your ward. We'll go ahead and if there's nothing else, yes. We do have a video to play concerning one of our employees' children. If you'll pay attention to the monitors, please.
A Sunday tradition in Little Axe.
It's good singing, wasn't it?
But this pastor only has to look at his daughter in the pew to feel blast. She's a laughing bundle of energy at Native American dancing competitions, on the soccer field, or cheering with her Little Axe squad. But in 2015, Rachel Scott's parents suddenly knew something wasn't right.
In August of 2015, she started having migraines, which we thought were just allergies.
They were out shopping, and Rachel was just sitting on the floor. She loves to shop and do those girl things. And she told her mom she just couldn't make it.
Too tired for anything she loved, but months of doctor's appointments just couldn't put a finger on it.
Rachel was actually one of our challenging patients. We had seen her in clinic for about a month before we were able to diagnose her with leukemia.
Pediatric oncologist Dr. Ashley Baker says Rachel's case is a reminder that cancer leads patients and their families down dark, uncharted paths.
She has a more aggressive kind of ALL, and so she does get more intensive chemotherapy.
Good job, sweet girl.
Nine months of aggressive chemo are almost behind Rachel now. She moves between exam rooms at Jimmy Everest Cancer Center with the help of a walker. The treatment has affected nerves in her legs, but it's a side effect that should disappear with time.
The chemo's been a little bit hard on her. We've been in the hospital a little bit more, I think, than, than most people.
Good morning.
And Rachel's ordeal has in some ways reversed the role her family plays as pastor and family of the Cornerstone Indian Baptist Church.
Now, because of Rachel's condition, we've had to switch, and now we've had to receive lots of help.
Rachel's had to adjust to homeschool, trading basketball for new hobbies like blending colors for an art project. Hope now unfolds like a flower. This social girl was all smiles on this hot September day at a celebration for cancer champions at Children's Hospital. Her father said it best during this Sunday sermon.
I mean, God is in control of every situation, of everything that happens in our life, good and bad.
All right, such a, you are all done.
One more clinic visit done, one step closer to a life cancer-free. Tara Bloom, News Channel Four.
Thanks for sharing that with us, Bill. Please keep that family in your prayers. There's nothing else, we'll go ahead and move to the consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that the members of the city council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed on the consent agenda does not meet with the approval of all council, or there's members of the audience that wish to discuss any item on the agenda, that, that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to consent, to approve the consent agenda?
Second motion.
I have a motion and I have a second. Hearing no other discussion, go ahead with roll call vote, please.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent.
The first discussion item is PC eighteen seventy-six, Public Hearing with Discussion Consideration of Approval of the Preliminary Platte of Oakwood Landing for the property described as attractive land, lying in the northeast quarter of Section thirty-one, Township twelve north, Range one west, of the Indian Meridian, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, addressed as one zero eight five zero, Northeast Tenth Street. Mr. Harless?
I don't have anything further to add unless there's some questions concerning the item or the applicants here.
Is the applicant in the audience? Could you give us your name and address, please?
Brad Reed with Crafton Toll, two fourteen East Main, on behalf of the applicant.
Did you say Jethro Toll or Crafton Toll?
Crafton Toll. Be cooler with Jethro Toll.
Just, I, I, I just can't, can't resist at occasion, so. Have you had a chance to review the staff report?
Yes.
Any questions?
No.
Concerns?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments regarding this proposed preliminary platte?
Move to approve. Subject to all staff comments.
Hearing no other discussion, I have a motion and a second. Go ahead with roll call vote.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Aye.
Five? Aye. Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you for coming.
The second discussion item is PC eighteen eighty-one, Public Hearing with Discussion Consideration of Approval of the Preliminary Platte of The Curve for the property described as a part of the southwest quarter of Section eight, Township eleven north, Range one west, located at eleventh at one one zero zero four Southeast Twenty-Eighth Street. Again, this is a public hearing. Is the owner or applicant in the audience? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make comment on this proposed preliminary platte of The Curve?
Move to approve. There was supposed to be someone here from, I know the engineer had a, a operation, and there was supposed to be some people here to represent him, so I don't know.
Make a motion to table this to an ex-councilman.
Uh, are there changes to be made or something?
No, there's not any changes to be made.
But they don't have the representation.
That's okay. That's what they want to do. They knew us tonight. They called in and tell you?
They, they said they were going, they thought they were going to be, someone was going to be here, the engineer said, so I don't know what.
I mean, I don't care. We can table if we want. Already here.
There's a, is there any reason to be tabling this?
No, sir, there's no changes.
If they want to change it, they can come back and make a motion to change it.
Sure.
Whatever. I'd move to approve it, get it, get it on down the line, let them get to work.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can you go ahead with roll call vote, please?
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five? Aye. Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries by unanimous consent. Next item on the agenda, please.
Is CA dash seventy-four, Discussion Consideration of an Appeal by General Lighting and Sign Services, Section nine dash three eight six C of the Midwest City Sign Ordinance, which only allows one freestanding sign per frontage for the property located at fifty-eight hundred Tinker Diagonal. The applicant is Mr. Larson with General Lighting and Sign Services. I believe we also have a representative from Hutterburg Toyota in the audience as well, Mr. Dennis Davis. So, would you all care to come forward to the podium and present your case?
I'm James Larson from General Lighting, and we're proposing, we have two problems. Is the current Toyota sign has a Scion sign on it, and Scion's no longer going to be a car dealer. I mean, it's not going to be a brand anymore. So, that sign needs to be changed anyway, just to cooperate with Toyota. So, that's part of our issue with Toyota. The used car sign is basically just trying to get it out of the hole that's way low there on the I forty and bring it up higher so people could actually see it on the interstate.
And make the two match. The new sign's LED and it's shimmering white silver. It's, it's lit all the way through. It's going to be different than what's there now. Much prettier. I've, I've already heard the dilemma, so feel free to speak. I mean, we're.
Well, the dilemma we had upstairs, we talked about it upstairs a little bit, elaborate downstairs. I think it's going to be a great sign. I think it'd be awesome, and I'd like to have it. But I feel uncomfortable granting a variance, because then you start changing the ordinance all the time. If we don't like the ordinance, we should just change the ordinance, and that's our fault. That's not your fault. If we want to change it, we should have done that, and I'm sorry if that's the will of this body, we should have done that. The other part is, I don't end up in court. Some folks think you might, some folks think we would, not you all, but in general. You just, I like the consistency. It kind of gets me a little alarmed, so that's my concern.
I, I would be more for doing this if they were going to keep two separate signs, one for one car brand and two for another. A month ago, we voted against allowing one guy have two signs for the exact same business. If this was going to be one for a Toyota store and one for a Chevy store in that six hundred feet, I would be okay with it. But for me, I think code maybe should be looked at. I don't like to give a variance, because it sets a precedent farther down the road. And we're going to go from two separate signs, two separate manufacturers, even though Sky was Toyota, to two signs for the same property. And we don't let anybody else in this city have two signs for the same property.
I really feel uncomfortable with the section of this ordinance that deals with the variance. For example, under the Board of Adjustments rules, although they're outlined in statute, they have a list of what a variance means and the rules for granting one. I don't, I don't think we have that, and so we just kind of, eh, you're okay with it if it's one business and maybe if it's two, and then we're making up rules, and you get a whole new seven of us up here, and then it's a whole new set of rules. So, whenever we do go look at that ordinance, I like us to put in like we have in the BOA where it has defined parameters for, for variances. Although, I guess, not subject to this conversation. It might be applicable later.
Number one, the ordinance, current sign ordinance, allows us to have an appeal process, which is what they've done. The second thing for me is, when I got the packet and looked at it, I really didn't, after I read it and looked at the schematics and the architect drawings, I actually drove by there during the day and drove by there during the night to see what these, what the current signs look like in, in the location. The two new signs, they're not two new signs. They are two new signs in, by definition, but they're actually replacing two signs that are there. And like I said earlier, he, the people, the current property owners, it's four hundred and eighty feet. If you have six hundred feet, you can have two signs. If you actually look at the business, it actually looks like that whole section there, there's three different businesses. There's the, there's, well, actually four. There's one at the top of the hill, the Pontiac, then there's the main Hutterburgs, then there's a smaller building that the used car, and then you have the Toyota a little farther down. So, if you look at it, it looks like there's four separate businesses there. When I looked at it, I saw where the two signs were at. I saw the diagrams. I technically, they could put one new sign up and unplug the second one, and they would be in compliance with the current ordinance, which is something that we don't want done, because then we have a sign that's not working, that looks less than appealing. Where it's at, it's not a residential zone. It's strictly commercial. It's on a heavily traveled highway. We're trying to encourage business in our community, and I don't have a problem with allowing this variance. I know we disapproved one last week, but that's a completely separate set of facts, and based off the facts that I see today, I don't have a problem with approving it.
Mr. Burns, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
When you, when you talked about the appeal process, and this isn't like an I gotcha moment, but when someone, when an applicant has the, the right to appeal, what are they appealing? And I, 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 and from your perspective, what, what do you think would be an appropriate appeal versus not? Not that, I'm just curious.
I make a motion to prove it.
A second?
I was just wanting to, I wasn't really trying to, I gotcha, I was just curious.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion?
I do have further discussion. My understanding, when we had the whole debacle with the sign ordinance, that the intent of allowing the existing signs to say, to stay, fell in line with the overall intent of the law, which was to eventually get us to have new signs. I think it's consolidate signs to one sign per property. So, when I look at an appeal, I look at it from the perspective of meeting the intent of that law. Again, if you don't like it, change it, but the intent of the law should be our measure of evaluation, and from my perspective. So, I make sure we added that.
More businesses were grandfathered in, and the current code's been in place for six, has been in place for six years. Meaning that the existing businesses should know about it or should have had the opportunity to know about it. And whether or not I like the code or not, doesn't matter to me. It's, it's there. And you've had six years to prepare, just like everybody else has, whether it was grandfathered in, or seven or eight, depending on how long the signs last for. And having spent a number of years in the car, in various car businesses, I doubt seriously that that sign, second sign will be unplugged and left to look like it was abandoned, because I know dealerships very much like to have their lots, lots look nice. So, I'd be surprised if you guys just left it up there and did not, you know, did nothing with it, made it look bad, but that's.
I don't think we need to put them in that position. It's a business, it's trying to upgrade, and then they have the available space.
We put a business in that position a month ago.
You talk about a small business to a larger business.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if we have a business in this community that has a thousand dollars or a million dollars. They have the same rights.
Well, looking at size, capacity.
Two, a month ago, you disallowed, just like everybody else up here unanimously, for almost this exact same thing. And I think that what we're saying to our smaller businesses out there is you matter less than our bigger businesses if we don't treat them the same.
Because you, how would you compare a smaller business with two or three signs to a larger business if they have three different sections of cars, of businesses?
They have three different signs for their GMC or Pontiac, their Chevrolet and their Toyota. We're only talking about the Toyota store. We're not talking about a sign.
The one last week, actually, I, I find.
Well, I think that someone, council member has already looked and evaluated it, and he saw that it's fit for what they are asking for to upgrade and make the business.
Let me, let me have one thing.
I want to ask her going forward something. So, from now on, if there's something that I go and look at, you're going, not, not that I don't trust Pat.
No.
But to just.
It depends.
Just give our authority to any one council member here who's driven by a spot and say, that's, that's very dangerous, because we're, there's seven of us.
Well, I, I know what you call dangerous, because I think he's a very capable and knowledgeable person of knowing how a business will look if, if that sign is put up there. I think he has a good idea. And I, I feel that these people, this business owner, Hutterberg, I know that they are wanting to upgrade. I know they want the business to look nice and appealing to the customers, and that's what we want in Midwest City.
Well, let me, let me have one thing also. If you drive up and down Air Depot between the twenty-ninth and fifteenth,
there's probably two dozen examples, and Mr. Harless and I have already had this discussion about our sign ordinance, of variances that we've allowed, and we've got a bunch of trashed out signs that we cannot compel, because we've jacked with this ordinance so much that we cannot get put, taken down without going back and, and, and messing with the ordinance again, or rewriting the ordinance. So, every time we allow a variance, we're setting a new standard. You agree with that?
Well, I think.
Every time we, every time we, we allow a variance to our ordinance, we're setting a new standard. Why pass an ordinance? I remember when this ordinance came, was passed, and then when the, when, when the clauses, when we started to enforce the ordinance, everybody had an issue with it. It's not the fact that it's Hutterberg. It's not the fact that it's anybody else. It's the fact that we passed an ordinance. We've got an ordinance on the books. We should not allow a variance.
Well, I, my understanding, they have already been through our engineering department. They have already looked at it. They went through.
They were turned down in the process.
Yes, and they went through the ordinance, and it says about what we are allowed to do, and because of certain cases, and this is one of them. Now, I, I know that we have been discussing our sign ordinance. I think we should revisit that and, and make a, and redo our ordinance.
I think.
We need to work on that.
I agree with you.
But I don't think we should make someone that just came, have now in a position where they're trying to redo a sign because of the upgrade and some president things has taken over the course. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Toyota, let me speak just a moment. Thank you. Toyota eliminated the Scion brand. That's what's changing the sign. We wouldn't be here. We'd just leave the existing signs that are there. When this man's company changes out the signs, my bill goes up.
When did Scion become a, when did you guys start selling Scion?
Oh, I don't know when they started selling Scions. Years ago. I know a car's been out ten, twelve years, maybe fifteen. But the announcement came this spring that they were going to wind it down, and it's over. There's no twenty seventeen Scions. And these signs are branded with Scion, and that's the reason for the change. So, that comes from Toyota National to a global sign company, Patterson, whose United States office is in Tennessee. And then they issue to a local sign provider to do the install and take care of the permits and things. And then I wind up, I'm not a sign guy, and I'm not a city council guy, and I'm thank you for serving. I can only imagine what you go through.
We get rich. There's a lot of money on the paycheck.
I've been a church deacon. Okay, I've been on a church board. I've also served on a homeowners association. So, I can only imagine where you're at. So, that's how I'm standing here before you tonight. I mean, I'm not, we're not.
Let, let me ask you a question. I meant to ask it upstairs, and I didn't get a chance to. Worst, because worst-case scenario, we don't approve your variance. Is there not a way, I mean, we've approved the height variance. Is that, I mean, that's a recommendation from staff, correct?
Well, that was previously done, back with the original, original permit.
Okay. So, what if you just end up with one sign?
Well, I would replace the one up on the drive, the main sign, the tall sign, the, the sign by service.
Yes, sir.
That's the main drive, and then I would leave the other sign unless David wants to take it down. That's Mr. Hutterberg's call.
And that's the worst-case scenario.
Yes, sir. And if I take the other sign down, I understand these signs have got a concrete base, you know, metal coming through them, wiring. It's going to be a lot of, we'd be better off if I left the sign there rather than jackhammering all that out and everything. It's not going to look good.
But each of your other dealerships only has one sign, correct, on I forty?
What is it?
The Chevy store and the Pontiac store, they have.
Chevrolet has three. Pontiac UMC has one. Chevrolet has three.
This is more than six hundred foot.
Oh, I don't know. I haven't stepped it, but I would, I'll, I'd say so, wouldn't you?
You had something to add?
Yes, just for clarification, once they remove or structurally change one sign, all the signs have to come into conformity, so they'd have to take down the other one. So, I'd say be very intentional with, with what, you know, if you move forward with a variance or, you know, say, well, you can just change out one, then say, you can leave the other one or whatever your intent is, so that staff doesn't get confused when they come in for the permit.
Because if we just blanket deny it, and they modify one, they must tear down the other.
And they could change out the faces of both signs. That's a, and they don't, that, that's not structurally changing it.
So, they could take, they could structurally change the one that they want by the service department. They could have put a new face on the second one, and everybody's happy?
No. If they change the first one, you gotta take down the second one.
If you structurally change one of the ones out front.
These aren't face signs. These are cylinder signs. They started a foundation, they started a foundation about eighteen inches above ground level, twenty-four inches maybe, and they're cyloned all the way up. And they'll be lit all the way up. That's the new design, so.
I, I'm with Daniel on this one. While I think that the, the ordinance might need to be changed, at this point, we have one set. We made it very clear a month ago, and I think that if we say that just because you're a big business in Midwest City, that you get a special allowance compared to a small business in Midwest City, we're making a huge mistake, and we owe that roofer an apology if we do not treat him the same way that we've treated Hutterberg and vice versa.
There's one difference between the one last month, too. They were wanting to add. They're basically replacing.
They are.
It is a difference.
But they do have, we, they are under code, and they have been grandfathered in for six years. Understanding that if they changed it, it would have to come, they would have to get a variance for anything. They're here asking for a variance, just like that gentleman a month ago was. And I think that we're sending, my opinion, as a very small business owner in this city, we can't step out and do something a month ago for this differently for the small guy that we're going to do for the larger guy.
But that is incorrect, what you're saying.
No, ma'am, it's not incorrect.
They were trying to add, and he's replacing. That's what he just said.
Do you know what grandfather clause means?
That's adding.
No, ma'am.
They're adding.
He's taking it down, and they're going to have to add. They're taking down, getting rid of one and replacing it. That is a subtraction and an addition.
They're wanting to add another sign.
That's what that gentleman was trying to do.
Add another one to the sign.
And that's what they're going to have to do.
They're going to tear. They're gonna tear down.
If they take one down and change it structurally, that means that the other one has to go away, so...
Now, we have two signs right now.
I know, but you won't, if what he says...
He's saying if you, if you keep one, and you structurally change it, you have to take down the other one, that's what the law is. That's what he's talking about.
Yeah, what you're saying, I, what my comment is, the one, the Toyota one, which were most important is because of the Scion, uh, removal, is, that's basically the same sign that's there now, minus the Scion. So, my feeling is, we're really just doing a face change in it, because it's the exact same dimension as it is right now, minus the Scion.
Following our codes, like them or not.
No, I understand your code, I'm just saying, my, my, the reason I'm, the reason I'm asking for the variance is, that is the exact same structure, just as a new deal.
I may not understand that.
Height, width, everything is the same.
If everything is the exact same, and they're just changing the face plate, that's not changing a sign, right, Billy?
If they're just changing the, the copy on it, they're just changing the face of the sign, then it's not, it's not...
See, I technically, I technically, under your code, could strip that whole sign down and put all new pieces on it, and that would be no, no permit needed.
That, that's why, I, I, that's why I understood you to just say that you're just changing the face, but if you were just changing the face, we wouldn't be here.
What's actually, it comes in, it comes from the factory in a piece, so we changed the whole thing out at the, at the base, it comes on...
That's why I want to make sure we're all on the same page. We're not just changing...
No, I'm saying, I, I could, and that's why I'm asking for the variance. I'm asking to say, why can't we just take the whole thing down, replace it with the exact same-sized sign, which would be similar to being a face changeout, because all the dimensions are the same minus the Scion sign in the middle.
See, if you look at the artist's rendering, if you, if you look at the rendering, the bottom of it's concrete, and then everything from there up is facia. In other words, the face begins eighteen to twenty-four inches from gray, and goes all the way up. It's not like a whole sign, or a, it's, it starts down here with facia, and goes all the way up.
It's got, it's got a long, long face.
Long face. That's good, yes, sir.
When he's done talking with her, I'll ask him a question, so I can understand it properly.
That's my, that's my appeal, is we're just basically changing a face, except we're actually changing the whole sign, but you'd still end up with the exact same-sized sign as you have today.
But you're structurally changing the sign, and curve our...
Yeah, I understand, and that, that's your code, that's why I'm asking for a variance.
Mr. Harless, since he's just changing the face, what makes this a structural change?
Well, he's not just changing the face, from what I understand, there's...
Right.
He's changing the whole structure, so it's structurally changing it.
So, you're removing, you're removing the existing sign and putting a brand-new sign up, right?
He's not, he's not removing the Toyota, or not removing the Scion, putting Toyota up.
From what he just said was, we have a concrete base, and, and we have facia. And from the sign, it's the exact same everything, minus the change of the facia. So, he's just changing the facia, not the structure. That's what his argument is.
He said he's taken the existing sign down and put a brand-new sign up.
No, I take the whole sign down. My, my appeal is, it's gonna have the exact same square footage, the exact same layout as the one there, other than it won't have the sign.
Your argument is the same effect.
You're just unboltin' the old sign off the concrete base.
Yes. And bolt, and then, yeah.
Okay.
And bolting the new one on. And we would, and we would leave the used car alone, we wouldn't even touch it, we'd just leave it the way it is, and...
It's like changing your socks.
Well, I, I don't do that often, so tell me about that.
You're just putting a new pair of socks. That's all, it's just like changing your socks. That's all it is.
Yeah, the base is, the base is the same.
I change a lot of diapers right now. It's similar to that, changing diapers, I do that a lot.
Yeah, I've done that. I've raised four of them.
Well, his socks have structural calculations and everything with them, so...
I, I, I think it's, it's, it falls right in with the, what the intent was, so...
I do have a motion, and I have a second on the floor. I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, go ahead and call for, uh, roll call vote, please.
One.
Mr. Mayor, to make clear, a nay vote is against the adjustment, correct?
I'm sorry?
A nay vote is against the adjustment, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Gotcha, nay.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
No.
Five.
Yes.
Mayor.
No. Motion passes.
Whoa, 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 no, it doesn't.
Three and three.
It's three and three. Ties is a, no, no pass.
Ties and no pass.
So, though, I assume the motion to deny will be the same vote, so, it'll probably just die for a lack of a pass.
Where's Mr. Moore?
Not here. Bad draw, man.
Unfortunately, he had, he had business in California, sir, he could not attend tonight.
Since there's, since there's no additional motion, there'd be no action taken.
There'd be no action taken, um, tonight. We would like to readdress this issue with you, um, so, no action will be taken tonight, your motion doesn't fail, it doesn't pass. And, um, maybe we can get together with, uh, Mr. Harless.
That's what I was gonna suggest.
And, uh, maybe look, uh, at, uh, at your plans again, and, and we'll try to get it back on the agenda for next council.
I got a question.
You got a question?
The best thing for you is, somebody made a motion to pass it, it wasn't passed, nobody made a motion to deny it.
But since it doesn't pass, it goes away. It, it does, it's not continued unless we make a motion to continue.
Yeah, it's not continued, it can't be continued.
But it can be brought back up.
But we can reintroduce it at the next agenda.
Well, they'll have to make it, they'll have to make a separate application for rehearing.
Is there a, is there a mechanism for rehearing in the ordinance? I don't think there is.
No, I...
I don't think we can read a re, a reapplication.
So, since, timeout. I'm gonna make a motion to table this. Can I do that? I might be against it, but if we'll give them the opportunity to work with Billy?
That's what I was gonna suggest. I think that if I could spend a little time with Mr. Harless, we could figure out something that everybody can live with, and not put the council in a compromising position on things that have happened in the past.
Let's, uh, look at the parliamentary procedure on this. We've had a motion, and we've had a second, and we've had a vote. Now, you are recommending that we pull that motion, that...
No, he can make a motion to table.
Make another motion. Once, if, if a motion to approve has not passed, another motion can be made. If a motion to approve has been passed, another motion cannot be made.
All right.
But my thought is, if, Billy, do you think there's anywhere to go with this, to work with them to make something work? Within our existing, within our existing zoning that we have?
I think additional council member would help.
There's, but in regards to the change, there's nothing to change, it's either in compliance or it's not.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to table this issue until further discussion.
I think you have that motion.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Go ahead with the roll call vote to table this one, agenda item.
One.
Nay.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Sir, your, uh, item's tabled, that means that, uh, we're gonna have to bring it back on the next agenda. This will give us some time to get together and put our heads together and see if we can come up with a acceptable course of action. Is that fair enough?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harless, am I permitted to call your office and get some assistance?
Of course.
And we'll iron it out. Sounds good.
I think Kelly's the one to talk to, but she knows everything.
I learned twenty seconds, I learned a lot right there. Thank you so much for your time, have a good evening, thank you for your service.
Thank you, gentlemen, for appearing.
Before we move on that one, I mean, it seems like there's a, a real desire from this body to do something, and I would much rather it not be an adjustment and make some changes to the ordinance, if that's what we're gonna do, so...
I agree, but if they can come together and figure out...
I understand, I don't think that's possible, but...
I'd rather give them the opportunity...
And actual, actually, uh, Mr. McClure, there are some additional changes we do need to make, uh, to that particular ordinance to start cleaning up some of the old signs, so, uh, we'll aggressively address this between now and next council.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, uh, agenda item is discussion consideration of appointing a board of adjustment member to fill the vacancy created when Joe Lanahan moved out of state. The mayor is, uh, has nominated or appointed, um, um...
Dr. Charles, Charles McDate.
Thank you. Uh, and, um, approval of the council is required.
Motion.
Second to nomination.
We had a motion and a second. Uh, go ahead with the roll call vote, please.
One.
Yay.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yep.
Five.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Thank all, thank all of you very much for...
And we do, do have an addendum, uh, item D five, discussion consideration of approving an agreement with Tinker Takeoff for advertising multiple Midwest City events at a discounted rate, discounted rate of eighteen thousand five hundred seventy dollars, and approving a supplement in the amount of fourteen thousand one eighty-four to fund one twenty-three Park and Recreation, and four thousand three eighty-six to fund oh four six eighty-seven ten CBB Economic Development, to fund this agreement. Um, there had been interest, uh, uh, in trying to promote our municipal events, uh, on base, uh, so that the, um, that all of the, uh, the people that work at Tinker Air Force Base, and that live, uh, live on Tinker Air Force Base, um, would be aware of what our activities and events were, and, uh, hopefully come join us in those. And so, um, we have done this on individual, uh, individual events, uh, in the past, um, and we, um, uh, thought that we would try to negotiate a, a discounted group rate, so to speak, uh, for all of the events and activities that we, uh, try to conduct over the course of the year, and so, uh, Kay Hunt has been, uh, has been negotiating with the, uh, with the newspaper, and, uh, that's what you see in front of you this evening.
I think that's a lot of money, and we're kind of in a tough place budget-wise. I can think of a lot of other things I'd like done that I'm not getting done this year for the city, and so I'm not super on board with this.
Well, one of the, uh, one of the things that, uh, after meeting with, uh, all the marketing groups, uh, one of the big segment that we are missing with our current marketing strategy is the thirteen thousand employees and, uh, uh, military personnel on Tinker Air Force Base. For example, uh, we had the Maiden Oklahoma event, uh, last May. Word never got out on Tinker, I think we could probably have doubled our participation had that been out there and been available. We have, uh, multiple events coming up for twenty seventeen, which will, uh, require some marketing. Uh, not only, uh, are there joint efforts because of the anniversary coming up with the Air Force, our particular community, and Tinker Air Force Base itself. This would be, uh, money well-spent to ensure that that marketing piece gets addressed, and those people are, uh, who, a good portion of live in our community, are, uh, are made aware of the events, and give them the opportunity to participate. This is one of those, if you don't spend the money, you're not gonna make the money, type issues. I do agree with you, there are other things that we could be looking at, but this, uh, the marketing piece, uh, is something that Midwest City needs to take seriously, and needs to start taking a serious look at, and investing some capital into.
Matt. Respectfully, I couldn't disagree more with you about advertising in the Tinker Takeoff. As a small business owner, we had advertised in the Tinker Takeoff for a number of years. We relooked starting in two thousand and eleven, and we keep a log of every single client that walks into our office. We have over fifteen hundred clients, the vast majority of them at Tinker Air Force Base, retirees and, um, current military and civilians. Tinker Takeoff used to be an incredible place to advertise, because it was available off-base. Now, it's only available on-base, and at the Tinker Federal Credit Union locations. We asked every new client that walked in, as we were doing our marketing, how did you hear about us? Not a single one mentioned Tinker, um, Takeoff. We were mentioned multiple other ways. We started asking questions, because we're, we have a very limited advertising budget, just like the city does. To current employees at the base, what about Tinker Takeoff? Time and time again, we were told, they don't pick it up, and they don't read it, because it's in inconvenient locations and not as accessible as it used to be. So, the eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, in my opinion, and this is based on, and again, it is, it is something that we've done in our office, and I know that we are a microcosm, and not a macrocosm of the city the size, but based off of the last four years of tracking our clientele, two of those years with which we advertised in the Tinker Takeoff, and the previous fifteen years we advertised with the Tinker Takeoff, I can show you from a micro area that the money that we were spending was not returned. One penny wasn't returned. How we advertised, started picking up and seeing how it went, was, believe it or not, you can actually advertise on Facebook, twenty-five dollars a week. You can choose who you want to hit, what zip codes and what clientele that you want to get. That twenty-five dollars that we spent, which was infinitely cheaper than the, than the Tinker Takeoff, brought us in actual clients, and brings us in clients every tax season. That's real dollars that were returned for the dollars that we were spent, and we couldn't see a single dollar that was returned on the dollars that we spent on the Takeoffs.
My, my, my one thing, I just, and, and I know this, this is hitting it from a totally opposite direction. And that is, we need Tinker Air Force Base more than about anything in the world, and when I think of, of the BRAC, which is the Base Realignment, uh, 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 what, Realignment and Closure Group, anything we can do to promote a, a community and base relationship helps us.
The Journal Record owns the Tinker Takeoff, we're not promoting...
Yeah, but, but I mean, I'm, I'm not, and, and this is a deal, we will not make our eighteen thousand back, I know we won't. But, but what we do, what we do here, is, is...
For the sake of advertising, it makes no sense, you need to get your...
But you're, you're, you're...
I was really enjoying Mr. Dawkins, guys.
I think Mr. Dawkins did have a floor. Okay, but, what amounts to is, it's not like, it's not like we would do this to make our money back. What we do this is to promote a relationship with the base, and, and I think, more than anything else, is even more probably than trying to hit all the employees at Tinker, we're trying to hit a lot of the, of the Air Force families at Tinker. And, uh, the, the relationship thing is, is so big anymore with, with the, with the BRAC Committee and all of that. I think anything we can do to, to show, when they come in and they, and they evaluate the whole community and the base, to say, look, Midwest City, Oklahoma, they do everything they can do with Tinker Air Force Base, we feel at home there. Anything we can do to strengthen that, I mean, to me, that's worth, that's worth the money if we can, can strengthen that.
I do agree with you, because...
You know, I appreciate that.
I do agree with you, because I know, uh, by being paramilitary myself, and, uh, having a base so close to a city, and you advertising events that are going on, that mean that you are welcoming all of you, welcome these, these military people to join you, and, and, you know, because you're right next door, they're right next door to us. They're so close, they can literally walk to some of these events. I mean, because some of them don't even have cars. So, I think it's a great investment, because it opens the door for them to see Midwest City and to know what's going on, because they know, don't know anything that's going on in Midwest City. They, they need to know. Uh, this is, this is our...
The, the framing of the conversation here is, 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 is well, well noted, Mr. Dawkins and Ms. Allen, in that we want to foster a relationship with, with our military base, and it's so paramount to our community. But I don't know that that's the frame in which our analysis should take place. The, the, the larger perspective is, is this marketing tactic going to help us achieve our objective, which is strengthening the relationship with the base?
I think it's...
I agree with you.
But the Tinker Takeoff isn't owned by the base, it's not run on the base, it's owned by the Journal Record. It's not strengthening our relationships with Tinker, when it's a for-profit publication outside of Tinker Air Force Base.
Its ownership is irrelevant. It's, it's the tool. As a marketing tool, will this investment help us make a relationship with the military installation, in particular with the members who are there? But my, 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 my reason for stating that is, I, I wanna make a relationship, but I've done marketing work, and I've had ads in the Tinker Takeoff. Mr. Reed's had ads in the Tinker Takeoff. I, I cut mine as well, because I did not get a lot of readership from, from the paper. The large complaint I got was, is in, it was in bad locations across the base. So, I wanna support the base, I would like to see us invest, but is this going to get us something that we couldn't get through another avenue?
This will fill a niche, uh, Mr. McClure, and I'm not sure where you're getting your information from on where the Tinker Takeoff is available.
I used to work there.
It's available at every entrance, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, distributed through every squadron, it's, uh, on the co, it's on the conference table of every, uh, every command out there at the base, and from cover to cover, uh, regardless, I, I understand it's owned by the Journal Record, but cover to cover, it has everything to do with Tinker Air Force Base. There's nothing about the Journal Record, there's...
I'm furious, I understand.
And there's other businesses throughout the community, except for Midwest City, that do advertise on there, including churches and, and other off-base organizations.
Have we done this in the past, these ads?
I'm sorry?
Have we done these ads with them in the past?
It's been a long time since we have it, and the act, the, the stars are aligning where this could be a very profitable marketing strategy, just because of the five or four anniversaries we've got coming up in twenty seventeen, and that is, the seventy-fifth anniversary of the city of Midwest City, the upcoming, uh, seventieth anniversary of the United States Air Force... the upcoming, uh, seventieth anniversary of the United States Air Force, along with the airshow that's coming up in May of two thousand seventeen, along with the, uh, seventy-fifth anniversary of the Chamber of Commerce. So, this is a one-time investment, if, if, if we don't see an increase in participation, uh, we can cut this ad or this expenditure next year.
Could we have.
But it's a one-time.
Could we have a proper relationship?
Timing is perfect for us to do this, and it does foster relationships at the, at the Air Force Base.
But it's a one-time.
Could we have a proper relationship personnel come up?
Your, your business fills a very small niche, and.
I, I said to you that I was, I was a, a microcosm, not a macrocosm, and I, and I admitted that. You asked how I determined whether the locations were bad, so talking to my clientele.
Mayor, I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I do have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion?
My last note that I wrote down, I just wanted, wanted to note, one of the things that I wanted to see us do in this budget year, which we did not get funded, was to put security measures in where our wire department ladies are at, they're, they're right there. I think this would almost cover all the security measures that I, that I was hoping we would do down there. And so, for me, looking at those kinds of things, well, we can, we can advertise in something that we're not sure is going to work, or we could protect our employees, that's like the analysis I'm applying. That's, that's another thing I was considering, I just wanted to note that.
Okay, I do have a motion, I have a second, go ahead with the roll call vote.
One.
Mr. Mayor, before I vote, I'm so sorry, did we wanna ask our marketing director at all any questions, or no, I don't care?
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Hunt? Uh, I'm sorry, I, I looked for you, I didn't see you sitting out there.
I was hiding.
No, this is probably a good strategy.
I saw you.
No, I wasn't hiding, I always love to talk with you folks. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, probably the one thing that I will add to your discussion is that, yes, it is, it is true that print advertising is not what it used to be. That, um, unfortunately, has been replaced by, um, you know, electronic, digital media sorts of things. But not everyone has access to that nor uses it. But there is a component that has not been discussed about this particular agreement, and that is, is that we will have a digital link to each one of the, um, related website pages. Uh, for example, if we're talking, if we're promoting, um, an event that is, um, produced and directed, if you will, by Parks and Recreation, there'll be a link on the ad that, um, on their website, on the, um, Journal Re, uh, Journal Record website that will take you directly to our website. Uh, the same with, um, the events that are sponsored and produced by the Convention and Visitor Bureau. Two of the ads in this package are actually for economic development, they're not event-related. They, they will go, uh, statewide, in, um, Oklahoma site selection, special edition publication. And then there's a second one called Oklahoma Living, that is also economic, uh, development-related, and those will have statewide distribution. The events will be either a full-page cooperative ad with multiple events mentioned in the ad, and half-page specific event advertising. So, one of the reasons that this package was conceived was simply because the cost of, of the C V B or the Parks and Recreation Department or myself placing ads was really cost-prohibitive. And we were able to negotiate the, the pricing of these ads down to, um, in some instances, to about a third of what the rate card actually is. So you can see that the cost of advertising with the Tinker Takeoff is very, very, uh, expensive. So this package allows us, we had buying power, if you will. Councilman Reed had, had mentioned upstairs, how do we track marketing? Some marketing you can, print advertising you really cannot unless there is something associated directly to it, like a coupon, or, um, some tangible way that you can actually, uh, count the number of people that not only had eyes on the ad, but then acted.
But on the digital side, they can tell you how many people click every day, correct?
That is correct, that is correct.
The standard measure for a print, uh, newspaper in regards to a marketing calculation is the pickup rate. How many people pick up that newspaper, how many people read that newspaper, that's the read rate, and how many papers are left, uh, on the rack unread. So it would've been good if we can get those, i- if, if, if I'm getting a, a pickup rate of like eighty percent and a read rate of two or three reads per paper, I know we're getting looks. But if that read rate, pickup rate's very low, then we, we don't know. But we, at this point, we don't have the math, and you guys, we, all we can do is go from our gut, and I, that's not good business.
What you say is exactly right, we don't have, they, they do not have a pickup nor read rate.
Oh, they have them.
Well, they're not sharing it.
That's probably true.
But, but here's what you do, when you're looking at a variety of options to advertise something, you look at the demographic that that particular, um, magazine or newspaper is gonna reach. And each one of our events has a, a specific demographic. Now, some of them are the same, but some of them are unique. And so, what we, uh, you know, advertising our events in the Tinker Takeoff is one strategy. We have many, we have, we advertise with the beacon, and we do any number of other things. Each one of our events has a, um, a specific marketing plan, because not, it's not one size fits all. But there has been interest from, from some to, to beef up our Tinker Takeoff advertising. And the only way that we were gonna be able to do that was to work with them and create a package, and that's simply what we've done.
And one, if you look at the addendum, like, uh, Christmas, the Storyland and Christmas, they're gonna spend just under seven hundred dollars.
For one ad.
For one ad.
Mm-hmm.
But, in, the thing that we need to look at is, are we willing to spend seven hundred dollars to try to drive people to come to the Storyland and Christmas in our city and spend money? Because that's ultimately what we're looking for, is to generate. I mean, that's, basically, we, we want people in that area, because if they're in the area, hopefully they're gonna spend some money. So do we risk s- seven hundred dollars for that particular event and try to get, you know, twenty more families coming into that event from Tinker that didn't know about it? And I, I think that's a, it's, it is a roll of the dice, but if you go, if you look through the breakdown of these events, I think it's worth spending that money to take a chance to get more people to come over there and spend, as, as the city manager says, spend money in Midwest City, because that's what we're ultimately trying to get.
Well, these events are for two purposes, I believe, quality of life for our own residents, as well as, um, economic drivers. And when we have events in the Charles J. Johnson Park, or Regional Park, or wherever else, people do come in from outside, and even local people will come to the event and decide to go ahead and eat out instead of going home and having to prepare a meal once they get home. So they are economic drivers, for sure. The other thing is, is that if you look at that list, you will see we have so many events. And one of the things that, um, that has been a part of our discussion is, if we don't have the money to fund these ev, uh, excuse me, to market these events, then really, why do we have the events? And, um, we have quality events, and we, we strive very diligently to, to market those and have positive results. Some of them are small, so the marketing budget is smaller, some of them are large, and we have larger budgets. You know, you, you're working with people, you're working with marketing professionals, and marketing is not an exact science. Some of it is experimental, if you will, but you use what you know to be true when you make these marketing decisions. And reaching your target audience in an effective way is the number-one thing that you evaluate.
I think, I don't think anyone's arguing we shouldn't spend the money, but when you noted, you know, reaching the target audience, that's, I think that's what me and Councilman were talking about. Let's, mathematically, how are we reaching it? We'd have to spend four, there'd have to be four hundred and five thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-seven, to break even on this ad. That's a lot of money, of new money, new expenditures. But if we spent that four thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars in a different marketing strategy, could we, or could we not get more or less? That's the conversation, it's not, should we advertise, I think we should advertise.
And Tinker's.
I do have a motion on the floor and a second.
No, you don't have a second, you got a motion.
I do have a motion.
Second, I'm here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I thought I did.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, um, I'll go ahead and call for the question.
One.
Nay vote.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
No.
Five.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you, Ms. Hunt, for your input, I appreciate it.
Okay, we're back to the regular agenda, um. We are under new business and public discussion. Is there anyone in the audience that has any new business or public discussion, uh, to present to the city council this evening?
Move, move to adjourn.
Same motion.
I've moved to adjourn, and by, uh, rest of my chair, I adjourn us.
And we're moving on to the municipal authority.
Now, called order the, uh, municipal authority of Midwest City, uh, we do have consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the trustees, the Midwest City Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent can approve and routine agenda items by one motion. Any mo, any item proposed by the consent agenda does not meet with the approval of all trustees or the members of the audience, which discuss a proposed item with the trustees. That item will be removed and heard in regular order. Go ahead with.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We had a motion and a second, go ahead with the roll call vote, please.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yep.
Five. Mayor?
Yes. We do, we're going to, uh, public business and public discussion, anybody in the audience wish to discuss any members with, any items with the municipal authority?
Moved to adjourn?
So moved, we are now adjourned.
We need to get you a gavel, I feel like life would be cool with a gavel. I just, I feel that.
That's one right there.
Oh, you have a gavel, you're not using it, what are you doing? Thank you.
It's, it's weak.
It is kinda weak, we need to get you a bigger, bigger one.
We gotta get a bigger.
Yeah, I'm, I'm down.
Bigger hammer, yeah. Okay, I'll go ahead and call the order, the, uh, Midne, Midwest City Municipal Authority, or Hospital, I'm sorry, uh, Authority Agenda, um, we do have two discussion items.
First discussion item is discussion consideration of approving the minutes of the staff briefing and the regular meeting of September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, as submitted.
Move to approve.
Uh, motion and second, go ahead with the vote.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yep.
Five. Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries.
Second item is discussion consideration of allocate, of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes to the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. Uh, no action is necessary on this item. We're now moving to the new business and public discussion. Is there anyone wishing to, uh, present any new business or public discussion with the hospital authority?
Move to enter executive session.
So we have three executive sessions, uh, the, uh, uh, the executive sessions number two and number three will not be required this evening, so we will just be entering into executive session number one, which is discussion consideration of entering into executive session as allowed under twenty-five O S, section three oh seven B four, to discuss Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority versus Health Management Associates, Inc., et al., Oklahoma County District Court Case Number CJ twenty fourteen dash six six seven and two, in open session, authorizing the general manager slash administrator to take action as appropriate based on the discussion in executive session. Move to go into executive.
We had a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate, and go ahead with the roll call vote, I'm sorry.
One, two, three, four, five. Mayor?
Yes, we are now in executive session, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending this evening.